I have a motion for Tina to adopt agenda. Second. Second, those in favor say aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, statements? I assume we have no statements since we don't have anyone, unless Chris wants to make something.
We have none.
Consent agenda, need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I made that motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion from Shalina, second from Tina. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Discussion topic, we've got CSIP. Planning, again, we talked about this a couple of months ago and thought maybe we would put it off. But now that things have settled down a little bit, and it is a very vital thing that we need to do really to determine where we need to spend money. We need to talk about whether we want to continue with that or not. Dr. Johnson was proactive and talked to our moderator, and he's actually agreed to reduce his fee a little bit for us to carry on, and so just a question of where everyone stands and what they think we all should do.
So what is, I thought when we had discussed it before, it was going to be like an extra, or just not like a $9,000 fee, what is it at now?
Well, we did half of it already, so it'll be around the $4,000 mark. And with the negotiations, it'd be closer to like $3,400 at this point to finish it, finish the work.
I was for, I mean, cutting like programs and all of the things that we didn't feel necessary, but after doing a little more research on my own, just the backup on CSIP, I can see where the importance of it is now for our school district. And I mean, I think we just need to go ahead and finish it and just go ahead and get this so it's set up for us. But I know we're in a time of tough, tight cuts and stuff, but if we're getting a discounted rate as well and we've already paid half, let's just finish it out, is my opinion.
Our current CSIP runs through what year?
Say that again, Tina.
The current CSIP that we have, it's dated, correct? What year?
Yes, I mean, we paid the first half out of this present budget, and if we do it, it'll come out of next year's budget.
Our current CSIP that's on a shelf somewhere.
Yeah, our current strategic plan, it goes through 2020, correct?
Yeah, the plan? It's a five.
Until 2022?
Yeah, 2022. Sorry, Tina, I didn't understand what you're saying. Yeah, I mean, we do, we do have time.
Can she unmute?
I think my concern is that I don't know that everything has settled down right now. I think there's still a lot of things up in the air. I mean, I'm assuming we're going to start school in August, but I also know that numbers are spiking, and I just don't know if it's, if that should be on the front burner at this point. But I do understand too, Tim, that we started it, so maybe we should just finish it, you know?
Yeah, my biggest thing, I mean, we've got a guy on the hook that I thought was really good. I was fortunate enough to be able to attend the first two sessions, and I thought he did a really nice job. It is unfortunate that he can't finish what he started because it would have been nice to have everybody there. But, you know, I'm afraid everything's lost if we push this out too far. And yes, I agree, it's an interesting time for sure. Just, you know, we can make a strategic plan and a couple of things could change. But also, the biggest thing is, my understanding was that we don't have anybody that's been through a strategic plan for our district currently on staff. We don't have anybody that sat in on the last one, so would be nice to be ahead of the curve on that.
That was my concern, if we wait, if we don't finish it, we're going to lose everything everybody's worked for already. I didn't realize we'd already paid half. You've reduced, got the rate reduced, didn't he say something about reducing attendance also to conform with the standards that they're setting?
Yes, that's something I actually suggested, that instead of asking all the people, the 30 people, to come back, you know, they understand, I think that those who were in attendance, the majority of them would understand, they, I think they would feel that it was really beneficial. But at the same time, I think they'd understand that, oh, we're trying to finish this work, and the conclusion of the work was going to be one more evening with everybody, and then the last session was going to be just with the leadership team, which would be all administrators and then a few, you know, some like instructional coaches and people like that, and the board members that were in attendance. And at some point, even halfway through that meeting, I think board members, instructional coaches would be going, and admin team would stay and finish it off. So that last meeting was really supposed to, it was going to be a smaller group anyway, so the variance would be that meeting, that first meeting back, meeting three, instead of having all 30 people, just to have a smaller group, focus on the things that we were working on and discussing. And then I think, I think we do have a pretty good understanding of how things are changing with health concerns related to COVID and anything similar to COVID in the future, and school closures, and how we are going to have to do a better job of being more prepared. And we're already there, but we're even going to get even better as things go along. That can be put in the language of the CSIP plan on school closures. Blended, the blended attendance versus traditional attendance versus 100% virtual attendance. We'll have all, we're working on all that right now, and we're going to have an awesome plan at the end of July just on our return to school. We have three plans, and I think that if we could get this, this training in, that could, we could even be better. This guy, he's up in Kansas City, and he's working with some of the best districts in the state, some of those schools up there, and then across our entire state. He brings a lot of value.
My comment, I just, I don't want to lose the work that has been done because one of my biggest pushes is trying to get community input. I think we've got a pretty good quality of community input from the first two meetings that were held as to where we want the school district to go, where the community wants the school district to go. And with reduction in funding right now, I think it's really vitally important that we have some sort of strategic plan to say, if we're going to have to do cuts, we know where we don't want to cut at least. And I've been really impressed with the moderator when you found him. He had done a study for Raymore Peculiar up in Kansas City area, and I had heard them brief it at the last School Board Association conference. He put a really good plan together for them, so.
So Merlin and Carl, do you guys have a group that you want to attend this? Or how does this work moving forward?
My thought, and Carl, I don't know what his thought is on this exactly, but my thought is, is the admin team, the board members in attendance, and our instructional coaches. And that would be selfishly for me, and I think for our new superintendent, Tim Webster, I think this is a great opportunity for him to join in and have some ownership in a plan for the future of our district, so.
Tim and Tina, you guys both sat in on at least one of the sessions, right?
I did not.
You didn't make it to one?
The one I was supposed to go to, they canceled.
I would like to make a note that through our, we canceled several PD, well, all PD this summer, and even some into the fall, especially some that were out of state. Well, the out of state, that's something we will look at for the future of out of state, probably not going to be doing that for a while. And we've saved quite a bit of money, in fact, one, just one conference of six teachers that we got, we didn't know if we were going to be able to cancel the registration for that, and we canceled that registration. I hate it for those teachers who say they're really looking forward to going, but that is the, basically the exact same savings of this PD. Well, I mean, we've saved more than that in other PD as well. So we're doing, we're doing our due diligence, in my opinion, of being really, really responsible. And I hate it for many of our teachers who are doing things that are more specific to their grade levels and their expertise, and we are missing out on that, and that is a bad thing. But like I said in my message last week, this is what we build everything off of, and it's for the next five years of a plan that we will revisit annually. We build it for five years, but we revisit it annually to make those updates.
I think the consensus is that we'll continue on with it as plans, and it was in the budget. It's something we definitely need to do. Just give us some feedback on what, you know, the planned attendance will be, you know, as we iron that out and when to expect timeline.
I'll make contact with, I appreciate y'all for understanding that and giving your blessing. I'll make contact with Kevin Daniel at Fired Up Consulting to lock down a time. I was thinking early August, to lock down a date and time for two nights. He is also coming to be a speaker at our convocation. So I think it will be really a great opportunity for us to complete the CSIP work, and for him to be part of that, and it'll be fresh. And he's going to come to our first day of school with our teachers to then talk about the CSIP and maybe, and make that become alive with our entire staff. And I really think we're doing the best we can under these circumstances to make this a positive thing. And I do appreciate the support from the board, as usual. It's complicated times right now. The things I'm thinking we, and I think you guys too, you're thinking, this is what we got to do. Well, the next day, we think, maybe that's not right. You know, we're doing, we're doing this a lot. So using as someone outsider that's gone through a lot of things, I think he's really going to help guide us.
Okay, we will move along to action topics. First item up there is bus contract renewal. I look, a motion to approve the new bus contract with Copeland from 2020 through 2023.
I'll make a motion.
And I got a second. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the preliminary year-to-date balances, recognizing that we have about five days left in the fiscal year.
Make the motion.
Got a motion from Tim? Got a second from Justin. Discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And last action item is the 2020-21 budget. As best as we can get it down right now, I need a motion to approve that budget.
I'll make the motion.
Got a motion from Tim? Second from Shalina. Discussion?
I have a, I have a short version and a long version. I get, if we want to do one, two, three consensus, you know, thumbs up, thumbs down. But I mean, I do, I would like to just talk briefly, I'll try to be quick. If you want, I don't, if you don't want discussion, we can just approve it.
No, I mean, I would appreciate it because I mean, it's a very long document. So.
Okay. I think, I mean, as hard as we've worked on this, and Susan has been just outstanding, being patient with me as we look at all the numbers. And Shannon being patient as well, waiting to the last minute when we finally think, okay, this is it. She puts the booklet together and makes it look beautiful, and this is a hard copy to have forever. And it's nice to have this to refer back to. And I know we put every, it's nice to have everything digital, but this, there are times when it's okay to have hard copies. We've been pretty accurate since Susan and I have been working together getting, predicting end-of-year balances. Of course, this year's different with all the skewing of numbers, with not spending money on supplies and materials, but then not getting money, revenues, but then getting the cares money. And so that skews everything. Last year, FY '19 year, we ended at 26.53%, and we projected to be a little lower than that. And we probably would have been pretty close to that, but then the cares money, we did get that big amount of cares money, almost $600,000 that we went ahead and put into this year's budget. And so that skews our numbers some. That's about 3% of a skewing. So if we, once we get the cares money in there, then that's our anticipated ending, June 2020 balance at 27.91%. Now, we did today actually put in some COVID expenditures, a lot of COVID expenditures, so that probably is getting a little closer to 27 flat percent. Lot of masks, lot of disinfectants, all these things we're trying to prepare for, for summer school, and the things we're trying to prepare for, for the return to school in the fall. Also, I'd like to note that in the past, we've always, we're always, we always try to transfer funds from Fund One into Fund Four due to the shortfalls, the withholdings. We're not going to do that this year, no transfers. We had been transferring funds in the last couple of years, some nice money because we knew we needed to have this savings account for the projects. And we have the money in there right now, and it should get us through. And I have it detailed, Susan and I put it in there, and we can talk about that here a little later. One thing I would like to note is, in Fund Four, we typically have had a itemized project budget plan of specific things that we would like to earmark money for, which like the track at the football field, the turf, when it's time for replacement. What I'm asking this year, because the things are so different with COVID changing to how we're doing business, is just implement a one-year hold on that. We're not going to take the money out, we're not going to add money in to those itemized projects. And then hopefully by the end of the year, maybe things will be good. We won't have to delve too far into our Fund Four to finish the projects more than what we've already budgeted. And we could just open that back up at the end of the year and revisit the itemized plans for the turf and for the football field and to get it back on track, not take a bunch of money out of that, but it is there if we need to. Don't really want to do that, but we know when it's time, the turf is looking great. It's beautiful right now, I just, it's, I mean, weather permitting, I'm really excited about tomorrow night's graduation. So, John, I hope you're able to make it. So I would, I always do this every year, just quickly, and we do have a banker who's a board member. So I always do the philosophy that balance, you balance providing the programs and services needed for our students in order for them to be successful and being fiscally responsible to our patrons. So we want to provide those opportunities, but we also have to be fiscally responsible in that we are not a bank or a business, we're not here to make money. It's to provide opportunities for our students. So that's, I always do that, that's my spill every year. I don't know if you guys took a lot of time just to, if you go into the, to the message, a lot of COVID talk about where we're at. And then on the second page there, page four actually, all the major, it's not all, but the major adjustments and additions, which does include a reduction to some FTE with staff. There's a few adds there too, so all that's detailed in there. Susan continues to work and update on the codes, that's on page five, actually, page six through, I guess that's five through 11. There's been some new updates on the codes, and Susan stays on top of that. She is a leader in that in the state, one of our, one of the top bookkeepers in the state. And so I always do the, pick this thing up. This is a big piece of the center part of the budget document, is everything that we do for kids, and that's why we're all here, is that all the activities that we do for our kids. Our principals did a great job putting this together and showing you, our school board, and then this is a public document, all people can access this and see the great things that we do for our kids. This doesn't list everything, but it lists many things. Moving on, the salary schedules, starting on 56 and 57. The certificated salary schedule did not change as we already approved. And then the classified did, there are a few adjustments as approved at the May board meeting for, so we can get in line with other school districts and to compete with minimum wage. The, starting on page 65, the revenue budget. And John, and Susan and I, John as the new board member had some questions, and we, you know, he's asking, now, what do you consider to balance budget? And the two numbers I do look at is, is the proposed budget, that big number on the top right-hand corner on the revenue side. And then you go to page 68, that's the proposed budget, top right-hand corner on the expense side. You can see there's a big difference there, over $5 million difference. So people might say, that looks bad. Well, that does look bad if you don't know how this works. So if you go on to page 89, if you really want to get in deep, we won't go, I won't go real deep on it. But on page 89, kind of towards the bottom there, improvements, it's in white. Improvements other than buildings, that's that remaining funds at $4.5 million, a little over, for our finishing out our projects. And then under that is $829,000 of just expenses that we feel that we are going to incur outside of the projects. So under that, in green, is $5.3 million. And that will be the difference on the overall budget that is what I look at and what Susan looks at. So I think it kind of breaks it down into, in the summary, in the next page after we, after, we had the debt service schedule on page 91. Just a few notes to make there on page 91. The series 2014, bonds, that series there, we're going to make our last payment this, this year, June, it's it, right, Susan? Yes. And so it's pretty self-explanatory there, the principal, the interest, total, then the outstanding debt. Next page, 92, is the summary. And the top is, goes along with our budget, which is that 27.91% fund balances. And you can look down to, just on Fund One there, which is the left side of that is, if you just look at beginning fund balances at 5.3, ending fund balances at 5.4. But then if you go all the way across, beginning, ending, how do you have so much more money? What's all that bond money? So. Then our proposed budget, it's going to change quite a bit on the proposed budget. You're going to see we're going to go down about that $400,000 on the left side for Fund One. It goes from 5.454. It goes from five point four five four to five point zero six five. That's the general fund incidental. And if you go all the way over, you're gonna see on the capital projects, we're gonna, our plan is to spend a bunch of that to finish off the projects. It goes from six point nine, actually seven million down to one point five million. And so those numbers, it's gonna be really great when we get done with this bond project so that I, you know, we can show you a budget without the bond money skewing the big numbers. So the next page on ninety-three is just the summary totals. It's just a regurgitation of all of, of all that information. And this is the page that the board, once the board approves this budget, that then Carl and Shannon and myself will sign. I see a misspelling there, we'll fix that, so, on secretary. And then the, just interesting information that people like to look at is the historical ASBR balances. And I, Shannon asked me if, if we wanted just to update this to get rid of the, going all the way back to, to two thousand. But I, I like leaving it in there because you can see that the school district was in a difficult situation at eight point three-six percent. And with sound financial decisions, using L.J. Hart to advise us through bond projects and strategic planning, the school district's in a really great shape. We're in great shape right now, I think. I think we're on a path to get these projects done. Our fund balances will go down next year because we're gonna be digging into, to other funds that we didn't really wanted, have to spend, but we're going to, but we're in good shape. And we're making really good decisions, I think, as a district, that once we get done with these projects, then we're gonna start building our reserves back up. We're gonna be in the thirties, mid-thirties very fast. And if we don't do more projects, we're gonna be in the forties. We're gonna be in, we possibly in the fifties in ten years if, if we don't do anything. But we don't want, we're not a bank. We don't wanna just bankroll that money. We wanna do good things for kids. So that's the budget document, but like, once again, Susan, awesome job. She learns so much every year and is getting better and stronger. And Shannon, great job putting everything together, but I would like to say one thing. I'm losing my number one advisor in the budget process. And she, she brings so much insight and experience and I don't know what I'm gonna do without you. I have a great replacement and he's gonna do awesome too. But your experience and just your big sister advice, I'm gonna miss you, Kathy. And she's awesome. Our principals are great, putting everything together. And that's our budget proposal. Any questions?
We run into like any unseen expenses with COVID here in the fall and all that, will we be able to handle that, like?
We, we've spent, we've already spent much more than what we, you know, than three months ago, we would even imagined with all the, the PPE, we're calling it PPE. And, uh, the, luckily, our federal government is doing a good job understanding not just St. James, but all schools across, not just public schools, but private schools, universities, education in general, they're doing a great job. We, Susan's actually getting ready to submit some cares application tomorrow. And that's why we get, got the, all those last-minute expenditures in today. And it's gonna be our first series of application for that grant. And, you know, we had the two different grants. We have the one that we already, already received seventy-five percent of that from Desi that was given to, to Desi. They distribute that to each individual district. We got seventy-five percent of that. We should be applying to get the next twenty-five percent very soon. That'll go into next year's budget. And she also is applying for the county cares. And that is all of this COVID expense, even going down to preparing for graduation. You know, the things that we're doing at graduation right now, the things that we're doing for summer school, the things that we're doing for the fall. Susan's been, and Josh Cahill's done a really great job of organizing and they've been working together and they have a list of all of the items that we have purchased in subtotal and that's gonna be submitted. So we're on top of it and we've been actually helping other school districts to get up to speed.
Other discussion? And those in favor approving the twenty twenty-one budget, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That is the last action item we have for tonight. Dr. Wells, we're gonna miss seeing you. You're invited to come back to any other meeting that you wanna come to.
It might be a pleasure to come back and watch a meeting from the crowd.
Thank you for everything you have done for the district.
Well, thank you for all the support over the years.
We seriously appreciate it.
Been a great career. Good to imagine doing it anywhere else.
Super. All right, that being it for our items, I need a motion to adjourn.
Oh, sorry about that. That's a good question, Barb. So tomorrow Carl will be on the stage and there will be seats for the other board members, everyone but John, of course. Right, John?
I hope to be there. I will, no matter what, I will take extra precaution. I, I don't plan on being close to anybody, but I hope to be there.
But there's, near the stage will be seats for the board members to sit. Trying to, you know, just not to have too much congestion on that stage. It's gonna look beautiful. So excited about it. And we're gonna wait on John. If John gets word that he's gonna be able to make it, then, then I'll send a text to you to meet at certain time, certain place for the pitcher, for the board pitcher. If we don't, if John's not able to come, we maybe already have a plan to do some Photoshop to an old picture that Larry Reinhardt's body will be used. Are you okay with that, John?
I, you know, we said that I had big shoes to fill. I didn't know we were gonna try that quickly, so.
Okay.
If we do, if we do pitcher, we probably need to get there, be ready to be near the track area. And I'll, I'll send you more detailed information prior to, but about seven forty. But if there's no John, then just try to get there ten minutes before and get, find your seat. I'm assuming, yeah, yeah. Seven, I mean, seven thirty is probably playing it safe, but as far as just getting the pitcher.
So probably on the track apron area over by the fieldhouse?
Toward, on the fieldhouse side. Don't, I can't predict how, you know, just don't know. I mean, up to a thousand people, I guess, could be there. And we did do some dirt work when we, when we had the concrete put in, so there's straw. So I'm sure there's gonna be a few comments about, it's kinda messy, but it looks really, really nice. And people are gonna be in their lawn chairs sitting in the straw area, so.
That's better than about twenty years ago when the straw blew into the cooling tower over here at the middle school after we had just built it and they couldn't cool the building. Okay.
Make the motion to adjourn.
I have a motion. Got a second? Those in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Thankfully adjourned. Thank you very much.